Silence is deafening.
Dan, are we good?
Yeah, yeah, we're, we're good to go.
Twin Town Plan Commission, please come to order. Would you stand for the pledge of the flag, please?
A pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The records reflect the members that are here. Bill, Chris, and Jim are by Virgil. And we think we can make this all work. Okay, commission members should have received the draft minutes of April 29, 2024. Is there any corrections or additions to those minutes? There are none, I'll entertain a motion. Is that you, Brad?
Yeah, I moved that we accept the minutes from May 20th.
Okay, Brad has made the motion.
I'll second.
Second by Dan, any further discussion? All of those except in the minutes of April 29, 2024, signify by saying aye and one thumb up. Chris? Gotcha, thank you. Delegations in action items. Evapco, Allen Dale Lane parking lot. Daryl, you want to lead us off on what we're doing here?
Sure, so I struggle with how they did the agenda on this. Typically, when we look at something, as was the request from Evapco, they're looking to possibly jump steps based on what you guys come up with for a procedure. We normally never go from a presentation only preliminary to a approval and then a final. Just normally does not happen. But we have the ability to do that with contingencies on all accounting review. So this is a parking lot. You know, I'm not being dismissive, but it's, there's not a whole lot left, okay? So, again, a little unprecedented, but we have the ability to, I would assume by the end of next month, they probably have everything they need, but they'd like to have the ability to move forward in the event that happens.
Okay, for at the present time, we're looking for preliminary approval.
Okay, you're gonna do it in stages?
Yep.
Did you want to present anything?
Anything different from the past?
I mean, as far as the letters, you know, comments, all comments have been answered by DDC. Come on up to the podium, please. I'm sorry, I haven't met you before.
I'm Rick Williams with Development Design Consultants. We have addressed and resubmitted all comments probably within last month. So we are expecting, we didn't have any really challenging issues and we're expecting to receive approval or minor comments at best on this parking lot.
All right, thank you. Does anyone have any comments?
I just have a question for me, instantly from my education. I don't know what a T R 55 or a T R 22 output is.
I'm not really, I sort of have some minute understanding of that. That's like the stormwater guys, it's like calculations to determine runoff and it's nothing, not an unexpected comment or desire from Mr. Lubinow.
Any comments, Bill, Chris, anyone from the floor? If not, I'm looking for a motion for preliminary approval. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll make a motion that we provide preliminary approval for the Evapco Allen Dale parking lot.
Is there a second to that?
I'll second.
Second by Brad.
Should we be moving for preliminary and final as a single?
Excuse me?
Who said that?
Whoever made the comment, would you please repeat it? It didn't come through clear. Bill, were you trying to?
Should we be?
It was Chris. What I think he was saying, he was, are we going for preliminary and final as it states in our agenda?
The motion is for preliminary.
Okay, okay. I just want to make sure. I think Chris was asking the same.
Okay, any more discussion, Jim?
Point of clarification, if I could. Darrell, is this contingent on some letters coming in still?
Yes.
So the motion should say that.
Yeah.
Okay, the letter isn't going to reflect on the preliminary.
Right, so my understanding, the letters had to do with the final. So if we were making that motion, it would be contingent on that. But for the preliminary, I wasn't tracking that any letters were required for that.
We have all comments and comments been answered for preliminary, right?
Yeah, they have, but not all answers have come back. You know, like Lubinow's letter was, came out on the 20th and they responded to those, but it's not come back from Friday.
Okay, so I see no reason why we can approve the preliminary at this point.
So my understa, I mean, so there are letters that are required for the preliminary plan?
Well, Jim, do you have anything you want to add to that? Basically, the letters will, they progress and they get more detailed as we get for the final. Some things happen before others.
Generally, we, we don't put things on for approval until we have approval letters from the various review agencies. I understand this is a grading only project, so, but we typically do get those approvals even at the preliminary stage, particularly for stormwater management. That's really the main concern for a grading only project.
So you're saying there are an issue with preliminary because we don't have all the comments back?
Correct, I think the preliminary approval should be contingent on those remaining letters coming in, those remaining approval letters. So if you want to act tonight, I would make a contingent on those letters coming in, those approvals coming in.
I will amend my motion to accept the preliminary plan contingent upon the required letters.
I reckon it.
Okay, Bradley seconded it. Okay, any more discussion? Okay, all those in favor of a motion for approval on preliminary site plan with contingency on the letters coming back from the agents? Singify by saying aye. And screen, thumb, thumbs up. Those opposed, motion carried, thank you. As far as the final site plan approval, I don't see where we can give at tonight. Anybody have any questions or concerns? All right, thank you, folks, and see you next month.
Thank you, Jim will be back.
Twin Town Police Department, 120th Bulmer Streets, seeking a site plan waiver to add a storage shed to the site. Darrell?
Yes.
According to your comments somewhere, you said the the design committee met?
No.
You didn't say that? Okay, I must have misunderstood.
You would have liked for them to, no. Who designed standards were met.
Old design standards.
Yeah, so it meets the design standards, but there wasn't a meeting.
No.
Okay.
So the site plan requirement is because of a few things. The main thing is, like the Wans building that was added not too long ago, they want to add a building to their site. This is a 12 by 16 foot storage shed. Yes, sir.
Okay.
So it will require county permit as well. I don't know that electric is going to be ran to or anything like that. They have some time for that. The image you see is very accurate to what he's going to do with the hip roof and the whole deal. Cupola is not, he teased me, I said, is that cupola really sets it off? He says, well, I didn't get that. The hip roof itself is like a $1,500 upgrade, so, but it's going to look a lot nicer down there, especially with the roof that's on top of the police department right now. And, yeah, so they're used for storage of the, I don't really want to say, but just going to use it for storage. Nothing toxic or explosive or anything. It's going to go along, it can go anywhere on the park level. For right now, we're talking about putting it on the railroad side of the lot, taking up a space and a half. Yeah, that'd be nice.
Darrell, why do we not have a site plan?
I'm sorry?
Why do we not have a site plan showing where this is going?
Why don't I have the site plan showing where the building's going?
Yeah.
Yes.
So, so that was some of my questions also there. So I looked at, I guess, in order for us to grant a waiver, there's a number of things that we need to consider and I'm not sure how we can even consider them without even knowing where it's at in the parking lot. So, you know, we're supposed to, I mean, no extensive construction, I assume it was prefab, that was a picture. We have to assess drainage, traffic, relationship to other buildings, landscaping, buffering, lighting, existing facilities. So my assumption is none of those are affected, but it's kind of hard for us to really do that without at least showing a picture of where it's at. So.
Past practices, we've requested site plans.
Yeah.
A minor sub plan, you know, some type of drawing, dimensions, just like we did for the one on Robert's Mill. So we want to?
Yeah, exactly.
Come back next month.
Okay, we all agreed?
I'm good with that, yeah.
All right. Next item is the City of Twin Town Capital Improvement Program. And there again, we need to see that this ties in with our comprehensive plan and also if there's any comments, we want to send back to the city council for their consideration. Darrell, you want to lead us off anything on this, or do we just want to jump into it?
I'd say we just jump into it.
All right. Anyone have any comments to start? As I go through, I didn't see 10 years ago where we were going to spend $7 million for another maintenance building.
Yeah.
That was one of my main questions.
Do you want to go through page by page or just, or how do you want to do that?
Not necessarily.
Okay. Well, I guess, so the first thing, just to make sure it's all clear, so for all of us on the planning commission, we, our job is to ensure the plan project is consistent with the city's comprehensive plan, which is the 2010 plan, so.
Right.
So we're good with that, right? So my very first comment was the same as yours, $7 million was a lot. But, you know, it, it does support in public works in that way. It does support transportation and water and sewer, right? So as far as the comprehensive plan goes, I mean, that project does support what we have in the comprehensive plan. But I guess one question I had was, it was divided into three different categories and I'm not sure if that was, I guess it was necessary because of the title of the categories, but I don't know how the percentages were divided between the three categories. And I didn't know if there was any logic that applied to that, I was just kind of curious.
I guess what he's referring to is the 2.8 million for the water and 1.4 million for the sewer and 2.8 for the streets.
Right.
Is that for the new construction or is that for the existing or is that for other projects of?
It's for that project, for the, it's for this facility.
Yeah.
For the new facility.
My assumption, they totaled up to $7 million, so I assumed it was all for that same building.
Yeah, this would be one large, very well-designed building.
It was, I can tell you that it was divided per how the funding will have to come and where the funding sources are. And that was the reason that the project was, the costs were divided between water, sewer, and public works and stormwater, I think, also.
So if the city goes out for bonds, would that be broke down into these three categories or would that be for the major project of $7 million?
So if we do, if we do obtain any grant funding or we may utilize the local government infrastructure financing program through the state, but the breakout across those categories of water, sewer, stormwater and, and streets is based on the fact that Public Works, their budget is, is broken out for water and sewer under the utility fund. Sewer will have very little, that building will support sewer in a lesser context than streets and weather because sewer is primarily out at the wastewater treatment plant. And that's where the sewer operators and treatment plant operators, they're based out at the treatment plant. The new building is going to support primarily the street operations and the water operations as well as stormwater management. And it will house some storage of equipment for the wastewater function. That's, that's how we came up with the apportioning of the 2.8, 2.8, 1.4 spread across water, sewer and, and streets.
Yeah, okay.
And we are, we are pursuing grant opportunities. We have a consultant engaged that's looking for some opportunities for us also. So right now, we are working on the building design and the site design, but we have not contracted to actually build the building. So that is still waiting on us to arrange for some financing outside of the city's fund balance. So we will take some money out of essentially the city's savings, but we don't want to deplete the savings by using only savings for the building. So we will either borrow or obtain grant funding for, you know, a portion of the building that we're comfortable with the remainder coming out of the fund balance. I hope that answers the question about how it's broken.
While we're on the facilities, what's going to happen to the old facilities at Memorial Park?
There's no intent, there's no intent to raise them or anything. They may be repurposed for other things for, you know, storage for maybe the Christmas stuff. I don't, I don't, I don't think they made a final plan. They realize there's going to be a while getting this, so they have some time.
Okay, or could it be used for some of the storage and stuff for parks and rec?
Perhaps.
Go ahead.
Yeah, I believe that was the plan.
Excuse me, Chris, we didn't catch it.
I said, I believe that was the plan was to use
Okay.
demolish because they're in that sad shape.
Yeah, so I absolutely agree, the other buildings are in kind of a tough shape, but I think $7 million is going to be tough for everybody to swallow in the community. I was just curious if there's any thought into doing it in stages where you would build, you know, a portion at a time and then add another portion at a, you know, at a later date? Just kind of curious.
That, that is an option and the building can be expanded. The design actually allows for the end wall to be removed and additional sections to be added to the length of the building if we choose to do it that way. That will, of course, result in a higher construction cost overall than doing it all at once because certainly it's not going to get any cheaper in the
Yeah, tracking that, yeah.
So, you know, the, the current plan is to do it all at once, if at all possible, but we are still exploring financing options.
It's nice to know that options are considered like that, that's good.
It'd be more cost efficient to do it all at one time if we can work, work it in.
Yeah, and that's what Jim was saying, I'm just, to me, you know, taking care of the guys first and they should have a nice place to have their lunch and they should have a nice place to have meetings. But as far as like having to go to different locations because their equipment's at different locations, that's just a lower priority in my mind, but, but anyway, I'm just curious, thank you.
The Go ahead, go ahead, Jim. Okay, the, one of our issues is we, we want to try to get equipment stored indoors as much as possible. It's going to help with the life cycle of materials and the building is planned to also be able to house a yeah a brine mixer in the future. It, it seems like, you know, more, more roads operations were going more to application of brine rather than strictly salt. And the county has moved in that direction and with their brine mixer beings outside, they've had to replace hoses and things like that more frequently because of the UV deterioration. So the, the hope is to basically contain everything in the building, you know, reduce vandalism on the vehicles and things like that that we have now with them being parked outside for the vehicles that aren't housed indoors. So that's, that's part of the reason that the building is so large is to be able to house all the equipment and also give DPW some room for growth in the future as the city grows.
Cool, yep, understand, thank you.
And just, and Chris, could you give me a hands up when you would like to have the floor, please? Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
I'll come back online.
Bill, you had a question?
Just, just my thought on, as, as been a long time resident of Twin Town and we're always, always looking at the cost of everything we're investing into the city. This building, you know, the building that was there, it was there, what, for 40 years? Are we looking at the same life cycle for this? I know it's a major investment, $7 million or whatever it's going to be. Are we looking at that type of life out of this? I mean, it's upfront cost, yes, but it's going to be there for a while. But we, it's a, it's a have to, it's a, it's a, it's a building that we need, as we all know.
Jim, would you like to answer that or Chris, one of you? Chris?
Just a thought, just my thoughts.
I would say that certainly, given the structure that is planned, it would certainly exceed that life cycle. One of the other issues that we have is that one of the current storage buildings becomes inaccessible during times of heavy rain when we might actually need some of the equipment there the most. You actually have to cross a creek right now to get to that building. And there have been times when, multiple, plenty of times, when the access to that building is flooded.
Okay.
Okay.
All right. Dan, your next item?
Just to tag onto that, Bill, we are trying to, you know, as best we can, I don't like to use the word future-proof because I think there really is no such thing.
There isn't.
But certainly they're eye towards building something that will accommodate growth of the city and the department for many years to come. And, you know, also the city did purchase a five acre site on Allen Dale Lane that, and again, you know, this building as designed should accommodate the department's needs for many years, but the site does accommodate growth on that site also and the building is designed in a way that is also expandable should that need arise down the road.
This, the design of the building as right now, instead of piece by piece as we're, as we're talking, right?
Yes, yes, the way, the way this, and we're, we're looking at a Morton building and my understanding from talking with the Assistant Public Works Director, who's kind of spearheading this part of the project, is that the way the building is designed, the, the end wall actually can be taken down and additional bays, so to speak, can be added to link into the building and then reusing that end wall to kind of, you know, save costs if we do get to that point. So just like we could scale the building down if we absolutely have to and then make it longer over time and basically take that end wall down, make the building longer, put the end wall back up in a new location, same sort of thing we could do, you know, in, in 20 or 30 years or more, if, at least that's the
Cool.
That, that assumes, you know, Morton buildings will be around in 20, 30, 40 years. But, you know, no guarantee, of course.
No guarantees.
The new site is where well 13 is in that area, correct? In that vicinity?
Across the street from that site, sort of catty corner across the street.
Did we recover any, did we recover anything from the company that contaminated the well?
They paid for the remediation, the air stripping and the Department of the Environment is basically overseeing a shutdown of that process right now. I, without, without access to files right now, I couldn't tell you the exact details of it, but the company did not accept responsibility, but they did pay for the cleanup efforts. But the city was not awarded anything financially that offset the production, the diminished production from that well. And ultimately, we took the well offline because of other naturally occurring contaminants.
Okay, thanks.
Yeah, so I guess my, just a comment on the Antrim Boulevard Water Main Extension there. I guess I was surprised that it was in, out, out of year and I'm assuming that's only because of the budget with the $7 million building that was, you know, next year then. It just seemed like that would have been a pretty important, a project to get the water, the water main fixed there. So just a comment.
That is also a little bit of a capacity issue for, for staff and our engineer. We are focused on some other projects right now and I don't think that we have the capacity to deliver that one in addition to projects that are in the engineering stage right now. So the Memorial Drive, I'm sorry, let's see, Memorial Park and West Baltimore Street Sewer Rehabilitation Project and also the Westview Drive Waterline Project are going to take a lot of effort between engineering and, and basically designing those projects. So it, it, it has been very eye-opening for me. You would, you would think it's a pretty straightforward thing to dig up a line and replace it, but it really turns out to be much more complicated than that. So a lot of engineering goes into it and we just didn't feel like we could deliver another project in the same year, so we pushed that one back a year.
Yep, understand, thank you.
We just felt like we were biting off more than we could chew.
Yeah, so on, so we have a downtown parking improvements project. So just, I was just kind of curious if, so that was planned for '25 and I was just wondering if there were any thoughts on the location or where this downtown parking would, would be?
Chris, Jim?
We, we've had conversations with a couple of property owners who have been generally receptive to the idea. And while there is a little pushback from from the Sustainable Communities folks at the state about creating additional surface parking in, in the sustainable community area, we are currently faced with We are currently faced with significant backups during PM peak hours on Route one forty. And the idea of lengthening the left turn lane has been talked about many times. In order to do that, we would lose a number of on-street parking spaces. So this downtown additional parking project is really to put something in place so that if and when that left turn lane happens and we lose four or five more on-street parking spaces for downtown businesses, that we've we've got opportunity, you know, we've basically replaced that loss, we've offset that loss with with off-street parking in the immediate vicinity. So we are, as I said, we are talking with a couple of property owners who are are generally receptive, but we have a lot of details to work out still.
Yeah. Yeah, yeah, I think, I mean, seems like it'd be a good idea to have a parking lot down there, but when I, I'm sure everybody here has been to the Odd House in Emmitsburg and they sure don't. They don't have any parking, but the place is packed all the time.
I guess it depends on how much you're willing to walk to get to where you're going.
Yeah.
Exactly. You know, it's I I think I I thought the same thing, Dan, up at the Odd House. They make it work.
Yeah. But yeah, but anyway, I'm not not opposed to it, just kind of curious there.
Well, that one is a little bit farther out, so if maybe we can contemplate that and, you know, if if the opinions shift when we, this this is a practice we we intend to do each year relative to adoption of the budget each year. So the CIP is going to come back before you, I hope, on an annual basis roughly this time of year. You know, ideally, had we not met a week early last month, this would have been on your agenda last month, so that we could have approved it concurrent with adoption of the budget. But again, this is something that we're trying to do every year so that we can kind of reevaluate projects and look at where we are on the current projects and and shift things around maybe by a year or so. Or if we decide that perhaps there's not the need we anticipated, we can certainly revisit that on an annual basis going forward. So, you know, if this is a project that, you know, say there's a shift in perception about parking and we see that there are businesses that people are willing to walk to, by the time we start moving on something like this, maybe we see that there's not a need. Yep. I I don't really anticipate that, but, you know, it it certainly, you know, there's still room to consider it. You know, we haven't signed any any agreements or any offers or any options and properties at this point, so.
Yeah.
Hold on a minute, Dan. The Creamery Building, why are we putting a hundred thousand into the Creamery Building with no idea the purpose or what we're going to do with it? If, you know, if we've talked for years about demolishing it.
I feel we could need for the parking because I don't think we're utilizing all the parking we have.
What was that, Chris?
We we didn't pick it up, Chris.
Sorry, I'm opposed to having it in in this fiscal year budget because until we show that there's a need, you know, I would
You're broken up. We're losing you altogether. Chris?
I think he's talking the, is he talking this, the parking lot that we just discussed?
Well, I was talking about the Creamery, not knowing what we're going to do with the Creamery Building. I think come up with a purpose and that would help to determine where the parking is going to be needed for future. I mean, why tear it down and make a parking lot? Why not create something that can be used? And then we can see where the parking lot needs to be to suit the purpose of the building if we're in fact going to keep that building for years. But a hundred thousand dollars, what are we going to do with a hundred thousand dollars into that building? Somebody with Chris, Jim? Errol?
And sometimes these are place markers too. The Creamery Building's been there for a long time. And money should be set aside so there's something. You know, we've heard the idea is, you know, let's rehab it, make it office space, let's bulldoze it, make it a parking space. But in with municipal budgeting, you have to have something there for when you when you to work towards.
So why not make it a rec council building or something like that for kids in the wintertime? And you have ground right next to it you could use for the parking lot. I mean, I'm sure people are are thinking about different different purposes.
I've heard a lot of uses for that over the years.
But it's, you're right, when you said over the years.
Yeah, I was curious what the the hundred thousand was for, but I just didn't know. Yeah. It it's a lot of juggling balls. I got it because, I mean, you know, parking or, I mean, you you can't necessarily pick where your parking is because somebody's got to be willing to sell you that a lot too, so.
It's a lot of juggling.
That that item for the Creamery is to, it it's more about the site, I believe. I don't have, unfortunately, I don't have things right in front of me here this evening, but I think it's to improve utilization of the Creamery site. If I recall.
Yeah.
So, yeah, so that's, there there are a couple of different ideas that have been floated. And I don't think any one of them has unanimous support across the council. There are some who favor demolition of the building and conversion of that site into additional parking. There are some that think that that parking there would not be strategically located to satisfy and need for additional shopping. There are others that want to see the building saved and repurposed, and that money could go towards a structural engineering study to see if the building is 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 stable enough to be rehabilitated. Now, some of you have been around long enough to be aware that the city did entertain proposals for the building some years ago and no proposals were received. The city was at that point hoping that a private interest would step up to rehabilitate the building into some sort of a multipurpose, you know, perhaps events and office space building or something like that. And there was no no interest received by the city, so. The jury's out on exactly what's coming to the building.
Yeah. Yeah. So I guess when I read read this, Jim, it does kind of indicate that it's the money is intended for like a study. I mean, you're kind of trying to figure out what you're going to do with it is the way I read this here and
I think in the past, there was quite a few dollars spent on studies already for that building.
Yeah, maybe.
Like every five, ten years.
There has been a a not conceptual design, what is the, a schematic design for potential redevelopment of the building into a, I guess, an an event space on the second floor. And that was one that was done by the Carroll County protect. And the price, the estimated price tag on that heated a million dollars for the rehabilitation. And the council at the time was not interested in spending that kind of money on the building and having it be a city operation. And I think at that point, that's when they were entertaining proposals for rehabilitation of the building based on the the schematic drawing that were received. So, so yes, we have, the city has spent some money on on some architectural changes and I guess going back even farther, there was another, I guess, downtown revitalization sort of strategy that did incorporate use of that site and some basically just schematic site development or redevelopment sketches that were in part of that. So there have been a number of plans for potential uses for that building floated for many years. I'd say over the last twenty years, we've had two or three different concepts floated.
But we'll get a chance to talk about it again because that's not planned until twenty six. I got a couple more, yeah. Just a minor thing here. So for the splash park, I've heard that, we talked about that a couple of times, I guess, or I've heard about it. I guess I was trying to understand what that is going to be. Is that going to be like a fenced in area where you like pay to get in like you did the swimming pool or is it just? It says twenty twenty-five on here, so.
Sure does.
If I may chime in on that. I, we were just having a discussion with Lorena about that about an hour and a half ago. At this point, funding is an issue and that probably will get kicked out of the CIP for next year and will be put off at least another year.
I assume that was a grant we were working on getting a grant.
I believe it was a combination of things, but at this point in time, the funding does not exist for it. And so it probably will not be in the coming year.
Yeah.
Twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, in the point, right.
So even whatever year we get it, is is it like a, you pay to get into it like we used to pay to get in the swimming pool?
I believe so, yes.
And and then we would have, I guess, county, I'm sorry, town employees that would be manning it, et cetera. You'd have to hire somebody part-time in the summertime like they used to do the pool, right?
Right, and that's part of the issue.
Yeah, cool.
I think that has yet to be determined, so there's also, we've discussed the idea of there being the systems being on a timer so that someone could come up, hit the button, turn the features on and that, you know, they will operate for so long and then shut down automatically so that we wouldn't have to have an attendant there. But there's there's still details to be worked out on that.
Well, it's sounds like now that we, it sounds like from what Chris is telling us with Lorena saying it's going to be put off from next year.
Yeah.
Is it something to investigate, to start looking at some of these other towns that have these, how they're operated? Just a thought. I mean, I I don't think we're we're the we're the only ones that have them or we're going to potentially have one.
We're we are not, and and Lorena has has spoken with some of those other municipalities that that do have splash parks. And and certainly a recommendation to push that back a year in in the CIP. You know, we have time that we could do that before Council approves it.
I think that would be very important to to know that part.
And we got one more. So the Memorial Park Baseball Expansion, so this is the the property that I guess Metal Brook Farm LP had offered to donate to the city. So I guess I was tracking that was one of two options, but I didn't, I guess, I was kind of surprised to see it in the plan because I didn't know if we really decided on either of those options yet. So just a just a comment there. So I don't know if I, I mean, I know it's just a plan, so I got it. That's all I had, Jim.
Along along with that Memorial Park, the one point seven million. And then what, two years ago, spend another hundred fifty thousand for two more ball fields? Why wouldn't that be all at the same time? A lot of contractors there grading, why wouldn't we do that all at once? Is it because of funding?
The second one, the ballpark addition or expansion, we don't have that property yet. So that's property that we anticipate being dedicated to the city when Mountain Brook Farms does their second phase of development. So it's, we don't own it yet.
Okay.
So we can't develop it yet.
Yeah, they had they had two plans that they presented.
Yeah.
Right. And one of them included donating that land. Yeah, yeah.
Yeah. Okay. And the Windy Hill Pumping Station, is that, are all our pumping stations monitored remotely?
Yes.
And this, and we own all, do we, do we own all the pumping stations like Carol Vista and Windy Hills and the rest of them?
That's correct. We do own all the pumping sta, oh, well, there, caveat. Technically, there are private pumping stations in the city. The, some of the apartments down off of Harney Road have a private pumping station. Enter Mini Storage, I don't know if you would call that a pumping station, but they have a private fourth main for their sewer. So there are some individual properties that have private food mains and the pumps associated with that to make it functional. But as far as pumping stations on sewer mains, those are all owned by the city at this point. Garnet Ridge will be an exception.
Okay. And the five hundred thousand gallon water tank, storage tank that's going in. How does, at five hundred thousand gallons, where do we account for that water? Is that water that already been drawn from the ground that we have to count with EPA? Or how do we account for that five hundred gallons of water in storage?
That will just give us more storage capacity so that as the city grows, we can provide, and and I don't know off the top of my head how many days of of water storage in the event that and and again, this is kind of the belt and suspenders approach because we have generators for most of our wells. Trying to think if we have any that don't have generators still. At at any rate, the additional storage vessel gives us additional storage capacity in the event we have a major fire or something like that that uses a huge amount of water and potentially could drain one of the other two vessels. But also that we have adequate storage capacity for a couple of days in the event that we can't pump wells for some reason. That we have water in storage to serve the residents for a couple of days. And as the city grows, that storage capacity should grow so that we can maintain a couple of days worth of storage for the entire city.
Do we have the site?
It's not going to increase what we can pump out of the ground. It just gives us the ability to store additional gallons.
Yeah.
So that, so it does, it doesn't count what we can pump out. Is that what you're saying?
It it doesn't affect what we can pump.
Okay.
So, so Jim, that's that's a reserve?
Yes.
Okay.
It's the same amount of water, you just get to pump it out early. That's all, right?
Right. So it just gives us, right, additional capacity in the event that well, for one thing, as the city grows, I'm not going to try to get too technical because I'll probably make a mistake and the water guys will like give me, they'll correct me after the meeting's over, of course. But it it's mostly about making sure that we have adequate fire protection storage and storage for multiple days in the event that we do have to shut all the wells down for some reason. Say, say there was some kind of contamination discovered that we don't know how to treat for or we can't treat for. You know, not that that would get fixed in in three days, but it it suggested that you have, you know, a couple of days storage capacity in the event that that you can't pump.
Do we own the site that this terror is going on? Or is that something we have to go?
We have not identified the site yet. There have been a couple areas within the city and growth area as identified as potential sites, but we have not nailed down a final site yet.
So shouldn't we have funding in the budget then for that to buy that site?
That one is still a couple of years out. I believe somebody has an incident event that we can call out what year that is.
Okay.
Yeah, twenty twenty-eight.
Thank you. Okay.
For the for the storage stack, the new one, right? Yeah, twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-six?
Twenty twenty-eight.
Twenty twenty-eight. Twenty twenty-eight.
And depending upon how long it takes for other projects in the pipeline to come online, that that need may be pushed back a couple of years. If, if, you know, if we don't have any substantial projects coming online, um, you know, we've, with, basically with the system being tightened up and us having better leak detection ability than we had in years past, um, our water usage per household has, has dropped overall. Um, and another part of the reason that this project has been kind of pushed out over time farther, farther into the future, uh, because as we tighten up the system, we're not pumping as much, people aren't using as much, it seems. Um, so if, if we don't have any substantial developments coming online in the next few years, the need for that additional tank might be pushed down the road also.
Okay.
But if something like Mountain Brook Farms comes online, or the sewer property or metal property comes online, that, that additional storage vessel becomes more important for us.
And my last one is, um, Tavanyan Road is at City Road. Why isn't that in the list of, of streets to be repaired or replaced or resurfaced?
I don't think there's been a need identified at this point for it. Are you, are you saying that it's in that state?
I'm saying it, if we wait, if it's not in the list to be done in the next five, 10 years, it's gonna be in a lot worse shape than what it's in now. It's a lot of dips in the road from where the sewer lines and water lines was put in, and as the vehicles go across it, you can, you can hear them pretty rough.
Okay. So if that may just end up being a mill and overlay project, and we really haven't called them out specifically in the capital improvement program, uh, that's, they are capital like expenses as far as the, the dollar amounts. Um, but those, we, we do hope that... So we haven't, historically, we've done a couple mill and overlay projects within the city each year using our highway, you have highway user revenue funds, or HURs. Um, and you, you may recall that, that the state dramatically cut that, that highway user revenue, uh, significantly by like 80%, um, I guess 10 years or so ago. And the municipalities have been fighting for many years to get it back, and gradually it did get, um, replaced to essentially what it was before the cuts. Um, but we went a lot of years without that revenue stream that we usually use for paving projects. And right now, because that fund hasn't been built back up and we, you know, so it, it was eventually restored to basically where it was before the cuts, but nothing was done to kind of fill the gap for the years that we didn't get the funding. So Public Works has been trying to, um, they've, they've reduced the number of mill and overlay projects because we've had these other substantial projects where we've gone in and done water and sewer repairs, and we've had to spend some streets money to, you know, to repair the roads after those projects and, um, doing Roberts Mill Road and Broad Street and things like that. We wanted to not tap into that highway user money any more than we had to. And until we get a couple more of these major water sewer projects that are going to require roads to be dug up, um, until we get a couple more of these projects taken care of, we're probably not going to do as many mill and overlay projects as we would like, basically because we want to make sure that we have plenty of money to repair the roads after we repair the water and sewer lines or rehabilitate water and sewer lines that we need to. Um, so Tavanyan Road may be on the, on the future list for a mill and overlay. I don't know that it rises to the level of a reconstruction, um, but certainly we can give Public Works a heads up and ask them to kind of keep eyes on it.
All right, thank you. I have no more. Is anyone else?
I'm sorry, Jim, what was that?
Anyone?
Bill?
Yeah, I, I couldn't hear it. What did you add?
Is there anything else?
Is there any other questions or comments that you would like to make before?
I wanted to bring about the THS, PHS Park softball field lighting, lighting.
Maybe I didn't understand what he said.
THS softball fields?
Oh, softball fields.
THS. Have we, have we looked at that? It's going for the 2025, Jim? Um, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Just a question, you know, as, as everybody's looking at light pollution and everything else, are we, everything's going to be LED, high intensity, as, if you want to call it that? Are we looking at any type of shading for the neighboring houses around there? You know, I, it's just something that I've seen in other towns and looks like it's daytime, and I feel bad for people that live close to that. I'm hoping we have some type of shielding. Do we have that up at the fields, up at the other end of town, behind Food Lab?
So there's not shielding specifically, but the lights are going to be located to try to minimize any, any light trespass on, on the adjacent dwellings. Certainly the park is going to be much brighter, is going to be bright at night during games, obviously. Um, but they, they're not lighting all of the fields because, and I, I know which one, you know, without the drawing in front of me, was just too close to houses, um, to be able to do that with comfort, that we wouldn't be, you know, disrupting their, you know, their evenings with the additional light. So I, I know that Lorena has really taken into account the proximity of houses as far as like, you know, which fields are going to be lit and where the light posts are going to be located to try to minimize any kind of, um, light trespass or nuisance.
Yeah.
And that certainly will, you know, be, a, as, as we do with the other parks, um, control how late, uh, the lights can be in use.
Okay.
Absolutely.
Any other questions? Chris? Brad?
No.
Very. All right. So I'm looking at some type of recommendations, uh, to take back to the mayor and city council, uh, that this fits within our comprehensive plan, and any comments that we made tonight can be passed on, they can see fit to do with the, if it's necessary. So would somebody like to make a recommendation or a motion?
Sure, yeah, sure. So first of all, I'd, I'd just like to, to say, I, I understand the challenge of trying to put together this, uh, multi-year plan and, and having, uh, uh, having, having to set things into priorities. That's, uh, it's not an easy task. Um, but I do think that, uh, you know, I think this is part of, uh, I think it is consistent with the comprehensive plan. I think we've, uh, you know, we're, we're addressing water, sewer, safety, transportation activities in town. So, uh, I do think it is, uh, um, consistent with the, uh, comprehensive plan. Uh, with that said, I'll, I'll make a motion that we make a recommendation to the council that we move forward with this, uh, um, capital improvement plan.
I'll second that.
Okay, seconded by Bill. Any further discussion? Any comments from the county? All those in favor of the motion signify by thumbs up. Bill, got you? Dan?
I'll say, ah, my, my network went down.
Okay, so your thumbs up?
Yeah.
Okay, it's unanimous. Thank you. All right, I think we guys did a good job going through this and pleased with it. All right, ordinance and agreements review, none, planning report, Daryl, your report, somewhere on here?
Okay. There was a meeting with, um, uh, city manager Wyre, Greg and myself, uh, with a delegation to discuss the, uh, Hoffman property. Um, no news yet, very, very introductory, but, um, one that was exciting. Um, we did meet, city manager and I did meet with Arrow to discuss next steps, and what those next steps are going to be is in the, um, so we had talked about, um, the Tuesday before, in, in the polls I gave you all, the Tuesday before our planning commission meeting would be the meeting we would have with Arrow and their consultants. Um, we, um, two times, um, limits were put out, 6:30 and 7:00. Um, Dan and Brad preferred them 7:00, but everybody agreed on 6:00 as well. You guys will make that call, 6:30, right, 6:30. Um, so the cool thing is that, uh, in, in, the meeting's happening earlier. I think that, I'm hoping what we're going to see is a little bit more participation with the child, with the, um, people who have children at home. Because if you're 7:30, it, I think it's draconian, in, in 30 years old. Because what happens is you're guaranteeing one, one spouse is doing, doing the babies, you're putting the kids to bed, showers and everything else. So I just, earlier meetings I've found, from my, um, political experience, um, were way more, um, represented by people. In any case, so that's cool. So we got that settled.
We're looking at July 23rd for the first meeting?
Say, I'm sorry?
July the 23rd, we need a first meeting.
Well, so, uh, the, um, Tuesday before the last Monday of the month.
July 23rd at 6:30.
Fair enough.
And we listen to that as a workshop or as a meeting?
So, um, not quite sure on that. My guess, so this will be a meeting that will be recorded. So I, I think that, um, it's going to have to be advertised like anything else that we do as a, as a, but I'll, I'll speak more of the city manager, perhaps the attorney. Um, but I, my, the way I see it happening is because it's, it's important and the guarantee of, we want as much, um, citizen support as possible and, 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 but it should, this should all be recorded, yes.
I'd like to see it go through as a workshop, just so the public or anyone wanting to come to our regular meeting can separate the difference between the two meetings.
Well, these will be two different nights.
Pardon me?
These will be two different nights.
Two different nights.
Yeah, so one's going to be a comp plan meeting, and then...
When they see workshop, when they see planning commission meeting, I don't want them to get confused.
Okay.
So if, if, if at all possible, we can term it as a workshop and still as a meeting.
Comp plan.
Workshop.
Yeah, yeah.
Something like that.
And, and that will be, uh, we'll be able to attend online, right, the members? I, I'm going to be out of town on the 23rd, so.
Yeah.
I just...
Yeah, so anytime you plan to be out of town, um, send, send, uh, Dan Dennis, um, an email saying that, and he'll send you a link and hook you guys up.
Sounds good. Okay.
So I didn't want to broadcast the, um, the, um, uh, date and times until I, I heard from you all. So although we discussed it, you know, one and two, whatever.
Do we have, did we pick a time?
We already did, 6:30.
Okay, that's fine.
On the 23rd.
Yep.
On the 23rd.
Okay, got it.
Okay. That was easy. And the meetings will be about an hour and a half to two hours. Okay? So Memorial Park, um, poor Lorena. Um, they should probably, she's hoping to be back in front of us next month to settle that whole, um, park and get moving on that.
Okay.
That road, will that road be included in that? Are they still going through with the road?
Yeah.
Okay, because I haven't seen anyone drawing. I want to make sure it's going to happen.
Yeah, I got you.
Okay.
Yeah. Um, I don't really have a lot, sir. Now, we had mentioned, somebody had mentioned about, um, um, the, um, Allen Dale Lane parking lot may or may not be being used for parking. It was, it was full. So the county contacted, um, the city here a couple of weeks ago when, um, it was talk of them using it temporarily or whatever for the construction vehicles. Well, so in any case, it's, um, they're fiercely trying to get it done, but there you go. You got, you got need and, need and what have you. And, um, but, yeah, look pretty full to me.
Yeah. It's hard to, kind of hard to complete with four vehicles.
Right. So, um, Chairman, I really don't have anything else on, on these projects.
All right, sounds good. Uh, construction, we already covered all that stuff, right? Uh, anything from Jay?
I don't see Jay. I thought that he was going to be on.
Okay. Uh, Bill with the county? Tiffany?
Good evening, good evening.
So?
Um, first, I just want to, uh, say I had a good time at the carnival last week. I appreciate the invitation and for the tiny town volunteer fire company, uh, having us there. Thank you so much. Um, and so the housing study, the website is, is available. The virtual housing needs assessment meeting was held last Monday. So that was kind of like the, the countywide, uh, meeting that we would have had. It was not recorded, so it can't be viewed, but, um, we did have that. And then wrapping up the engagement events, the focus group meetings, the stakeholder interviews, basically all of the public engagement work, we're at the tail end of that. So it'll soon be just data gathering before we get a draft, maybe like in August time. Um, and then the water sewer updates, the fall amendments are due August 1st. The annual report was presented to the Carroll County Planning Commission on the 5th of June, and, um, if you wanted to watch the presentation in a brief overview, um, it's also, it was also presented on the 20th, last Thursday, for a very, um, condensed version. And for text amendments, we're still looking at DAF, food processing, or, um, DAF residual storage in the county. There's still a moratorium, and that's going to public hearing this Thursday. And also this Thursday, um, the staff will be going before the county commissioners to just kind of kick off our, our, the county master plan process, just going over. And it'll be informative and asking for any guidance that they want to provide for what they'd like to see us doing too. So we're kind of be doing that at the same time you guys are doing it.
Any comments or questions? Thank you very much.
Have a good night.
Thanks, Stephanie.
All right, anything on our old business? New business?
Yeah, so we were, uh, out at the Mead Crossing, we were looking at, uh, the stormwater issues there. Did we, did we, I thought there was, uh, I guess we were, we had more water showing up every time it rained in the sewer than what, uh, we were expecting to have?
Well, I don't know what the latest numbers are, but that was a, an issue. Um, they think that it could have been as simple as the, the wrong seal on the manhole cover, um, oddly enough. But, you know, Mike has explained to me that we had that much water running across, you know, a, a street. It's a lot of water. So, but I haven't heard the very latest, so I don't know when yours all, but, but...
Okay.
Early on in the process.
Yeah, I was just curious if we, uh...
Jim had a comment. Jim?
Yeah, um, Daryl mentioned the manhole covers. Uh, the developer has put seals in, under a number of the manhole covers that were, um, we found they were, uh, too close enough to the gutter that, that flows going across the top of those manholes and the holes in the manhole lids, um, was contributing significantly to some inflow. And that did make a difference, but the rains of the last month or so have shown that there still are, still are other areas that need to be fixed out there. So, well, there's been improvement, uh, but they're not, if, there, there's still something else going on out there.
Cool.
Okay. Anything else?
Yeah, one more question. So, uh, see, we, we got the, uh, letter from the, uh, um, Fire Prevention and Life Safety Plan Review on Garnet Ridge, and, uh, they indicated that there was no, uh, um, no concerns out there. So I guess I was, I was just kind of curious as to what they actually, uh, what they actually review, and if someone could point me to, uh, something I could read to tell me what, what is actually reviewed by the, uh, um, emergency services folks.
I'm sure probably one ordinance or a code or something that they go by, but I guess, uh, it wouldn't hurt to contact them and find out.
Um...
Did that, did we all know?
Yep, yep, I can do that.
You're going to do that, or want to do it through the staff here?
Uh, that, the only reason I didn't call Brian is because I wanted to come to this, if the staff wants to do it, that's fine.
Okay.
But...
Let, let's do that through the staff.
I'm fine with that.
Yeah, there you go.
Thanks.
Thank you, appreciate that.
Anything else?
That will get done, yeah.
That's all I got.
All right, anything else?
Chairman, just one more thing. The Cunningham, this is informational, I only, the, the three lots down in the back of the...
Yeah.
Um, I just wanted you to see, they, they sent me copies, I thought I just didn't see it. I just wanted you to see, they sent me copies, I thought I just never seen it.
Yep.
Yeah.
So we're good with that? All right. So anybody else have anything? If not, our next meeting would be July 23rd, and then, but our regular meeting is July 29th. So I'll entertain a motion for a German.
I'm going to adjourn.
Okay, Bradley made the motion. Someone I'd like to second that, Bill, would you mind second that?
Sure, second, I second that.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of German signify by saying aye.
All right.
Oppose likewise. All right, thank you, folks.
Have a good evening, y'all.
Thanks, y'all too. You too.
Eric?